All right, we will call the meeting to order. I'm going to, we've done the pledge of allegiance once and did very well on it, so we'll skip that and go right onto roll call.
Nudera?
Nudera?
Here.
Park?
Here.
Hanquist?
Here.
Bastido? Mulliner?
Here.
Brennan?
Here.
Verimus? Here. Deuter?
Here.
Dunn?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Palmski?
Here.
Jensen? Toledo?
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent. Cahill is absent. Thirteen present, one absent.
Did Hanquist say here?
Yeah. I did.
Thank you. All right, thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. The governor of the state of Illinois declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak in all of the city of Elmhurst is covered by the disaster area. In light of the ongoing COVID-19 outbreak, the mayor of the city of Elmhurst determined that an in-person meeting of the November 15, 2020, 2021 committee of the whole meeting may not be practical or prudent in light of the disaster. All the aldermen of the city council participating in the November 15, 2021 committee of the whole meeting, wherever their physical location, shall be verified and determined that they can hear one another and can hear all discussion and testimony during the meeting. Alderman Hanquist is participating remotely. Can you hear me, Alderman Hanquist?
I can, Mayor.
Thank you, and we can hear you. We will move on to public comment. Is there anyone here that wants to give public comment this evening? Has anyone signed up, Clerk Tamer?
No, Mayor.
No one has signed up. No public comment at this time. We will then move on to approval of minutes. We have the November 1, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. May I have a motion to approve those minutes? Alderman Nudera, second Alderman Hill, any discussion on those minutes? There being none, Clerk Tamer, please call the roll.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill is absent. Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The November 1st minutes are approved. Item B is approval of the September 13, 2021 Committee of the Whole Minutes, a motion to approve. Alderman Brennan, second Alderman Deuter, any discussion? There being none, Clerk Tamer.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
Cahill's absent. Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. The September 13th Committee of the Whole Minutes are approved. Item C, November 23, 2020 Committee of the Whole Minutes, a motion to approve. Alderman Mulliner, second Alderman Palmski, any discussion on those minutes? There being none, Clerk Tamer, call the roll.
Nudera?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Hanquist?
Aye.
Bastido?
Aye.
Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Verimus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palmski?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Toledo?
Aye.
And Cahill's absent. Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent. Those minutes from November 23rd are approved. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, no, we have to do some business first. Sorry, City Manager. All right, item four, business before the committee, continued review of the fiscal year 2022 budget, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Before we get started with the review, I want to point out the piece of paper that Ryan Bruins just passed out to the council. One side, very important, which is our mission statement from the city, but on the other side is the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for 2021. So that will replace the second page in your budget, excuse me, the third page in your budget book. And I wanted to point that out and congratulate the Finance Department for their work on last year's budget, which is acknowledged in this certificate. We were anticipating it, but we had a placeholder of 2020 in there for the budget draft that is before you. So, that said, we are going to go through the Public Works budget today. As you can see, there are a number of budget items that relate to Public Works. With me is Director Stan Bellicky, who is just about on a year with us, learning a lot and accomplishing a lot in that year. And of course, behind him are Corey To Berry, Paul, and Kent, so they can lend support to him, although he's been doing a great job in memorizing everything that's in his budget. We'll put him to the test, and I'm going to take away his budget book. But we're going to start on page 128, and I know Stan has some comments on accomplishments of the past year.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure to present the proposed Public Works Department budget to you this evening for 2022. Tonight, I will touch on highlights from this year and outline the department's major focus in the coming year. The Public Works Department is charged with maintaining the physical assets of the city, including 160 miles of streets, public buildings and grounds such as City Hall, the Public Works Garage, Police Department, Fire Department, Parking Deck, to name a few. 6,700 streetlights, 25 traffic signals, 23,000 parkway trees. The production and distribution of clean, safe drinking water through 175 miles of water main. Collection and treatment of wastewater through 148 miles of sanitary sewer and the water reclamation facility. Stormwater management, solid waste collection and recycling, engineering services, and fleet management. Starting on page 128 and just sort of going through some of our operations kind of side of the part of the department. Once again, the Street Division installed plastic jersey barriers in the downtown to support the creation and expansion of outdoor dining spaces this year. Sidewalk cleaning operations were performed on a bi-weekly basis during the months when outdoor dining was in place. And routine maintenance such as street sweeping, patching, crack filling, and sign repairs were completed. A major overhaul of the signage in the CBD was completed to support recent parking changes. And block parties returned this year, and we expect 2022 block party requests to increase to more normal levels in the coming year. One notable change to the budget in this section in the coming year is that the department will restart the five-year cycle of the stormwater inlet cleaning program. That will be going through all areas of the city. All inlets were cleaned in 2016 and 2017, and then from that point on monitored to determine the start of the next cleaning cycle. Also notable in this area is that we are noticing commodity increases in street marking materials, the paint that we use for that, asphalt materials, as well as sign materials, street sign posts, sign blanks, and so on. So there are some budget requests that are related to those increases that we're seeing. The Forestry Division continues to maintain the urban forest. While the financial uncertainties of last year necessitated delaying tree planting in 2021, the proposed budget includes catching up with parkway tree planting during 2022 and '23. The proposed '22 budget accounts for the supply and planting of approximately 800 trees, which is about one and a half times a normal year for the city. This year, the city received its 41st consecutive Tree City USA Award, which is one of the longest-running in the state of Illinois. A couple notes on our parkway tree population, our namesake tree, the elm tree. In 2004, the city had just over 2,800 elm trees in the public parkway areas, and as of this November, we are down to about 1,207, which is about 43% of what we had in 2004. The ash tree population does also continue to decline, and that is primarily due to the emerald ash borer disease. We had in 2009 about 2,300 ash trees, and we are down to only about 373 ash trees in this city, which is about 16% of what existed in 2009. So it's definitely a decline. On the electrical side, in addition to the routine maintenance of all streetlights and traffic signals, the Electrical Division completed several larger maintenance projects and system upgrades. Forty-two decorative steel streetlight poles were replaced on North Avenue, York Street, and Lake Street. This is part of a multi-year project to replace all steel poles with aluminum poles, which are more resistant to corrosion. Also, this group replaced four traffic signal controllers as part of a three-year program to replace and modernize the traffic signal controllers throughout the city. Another project that this group has taken on this past year is continued work on a multi-year plan to convert streetlight fixtures to LED. This is something that's noted in the city's sustainability plan, and by the end of 2021, we will have converted about 1,500 of the city's 6,700 streetlights, with about 1,000 being done this year. And again, the plan is to finish the entire system within about a five-year period, and our staff is targeting areas to start this work based on the difficulty of servicing the area, reliability, age, and energy savings, and so on. We've also been working with ComEd to make sure that billing and so forth is updated once those lighting upgrades are completed. On the facilities and building maintenance side of Public Works, this group continues to host quarterly electronic recycling events at the Public Works Garage. Again, this is something that was noted in the city's sustainability plan, is something that we'd like to continue. This group completes routine building maintenance, maintains elevators and HVAC systems. They also provided contract administration and oversight for the Public Works Garage roof replacement project. That was about a $1.1 million project at Public Works. 2022 will include routine maintenance and upgrades to the HVAC system at Public Works in the estimated amount of about $288,000, as well as exterior painting of the Public Works Garage. This facility was built in 1999 and is now 22 years old, and the budget repairs that we have are typical for a facility of this age. One item of note, just a bit beyond 2022, is that the release of the property just to the south of the Public Works Garage is expected to be complete within about the next year, and this will permit the city to proceed with the construction of material storage to the south of this building, which is laid out in the cab into the future. Besides consolidating storage of Public Works materials at the garage and remove items from the water reclamation facility site, this will also allow for possible needed future expansion at the water reclamation facility due to phosphorus or other IEP treatment requirements. There is nothing immediate, but that is in the five-year plan for the city. Another item that was notable for this group was that there were reduced vacant part-time positions for custodial services that were shifted to contractual services for the parking deck cleaning. And you will notice that in the line item for contractual services. This was an item that was identified in the City Services and Staffing Report that was completed earlier in 2021, and an increase in contractual services is on page 145 in the amount of about $55,000 for next year. On the fleet side of Public Works, currently, there is a replacement of a heavy-duty lift, excuse me, that's in process. I think also notable is that 11 additional vehicles are being converted to propane this year, which will bring a total of 29 in the city fleet. This conversion of the 11 vehicles is being completed at a cost of about $83,000, with $44,000 of that coming in terms of a rebate from the IEP. The city has decreased its fuel spend due to the use of propane in 2021 by a little over $6,200. And again, as part of kind of the city's sustainability efforts, staff continues to consider alternative fuel options for every vehicle and piece of equipment that is replaced. Notable that just out in the future is that the fuel island replacement is on the horizon, tentatively planned for 2023, which could also be pushed to Phase III of the Public Works Garage, depending on the condition and the timing of some of that work. A few items of note on the engineering side in Public Works. In the street and bridge administration area on pages 130 to 134, there is a proposed additional $50,000 in 2022 for a pilot neighborhood traffic study. This is a follow-up to an item that the City Council, I think, recently approved at just their last meeting. And the purpose of this would be to thoroughly study traffic issues in a particular neighborhood, analyze the data that's collected, prepare a set of physical and operational recommendations that would be brought forward to have a dialogue with the neighborhood and with the City Council. Also in this area is the funding for the city's contract paving program for 2022. That's proposed to be $3.3 million. If you recall, in this year, there was a reduction in that program, again, kind of due to the fiscal uncertainty that the pandemic might bring to the city. So 2022 really kind of gets that program back up to a more typical level. The total contract paving program for next year will be about $5 million, with the goal to resurface about seven and a half miles of street per year. We also include sidewalk replacement and slab jacking in this area to maintain our sidewalks and minimize any potential trip and fall issues. On the public benefit cost centers in the budget on page 150, there are some dollars in there that are related to some pedestrian and bicycle improvements. The Route 83 pedestrian and bike bridge Phase II engineering is in the budget for next year. That is a $220,000 effort with anticipated timeframe of about 18 months. Construction of that project is anticipated in 2025, and at this point, the estimated project cost for that is about $3.4 million, with 2.4 of that being grant funding. Also in this area is the start of the implementation of the adopted bicycle and pedestrian plan. For next year, the proposal is to proceed with $234,000 worth of bicycle and pedestrian improvements. The idea is to start with some kind of low-hanging fruit that involves mainly signing and striping, and that the implementation of this plan would take place over a period of five to 10 years and would largely be driven by the availability of grant dollars as we get into some of the more costly or complicated elements of the plan. There's also a possibility that some of this work might be able to be bundled or grouped with other infrastructure projects that are being constructed across the city. Also notable in this area is funding for improvements at the York Street and Prairie Path Crossing, with some possible in-house construction of work at that location. Continuing on to other roadway improvements that the city has, the city is seeing an influx of approximately $3 million in rebuild Illinois funds that are being accounted for in the MFT Cost Center, and those dollars are going to fund some important roadway reconstruction projects that the city has laid out. One of them is the Brushhill Road reconstruction from Euclid to Salt Creek. That is approximately a $1.2 million roadway reconstruction project. Van Buren from Salt Creek to Spring Road, and also Crescent from Poplar to I-290. Those are also identified for construction next year in the amount of approximately $1.6 million, as well as the First Street Bridge Deck replacement at about $360,000. So that, those funds from the state are a substantial boost to being able to proceed with those projects. A few other roadway and sidewalk improvements that we have that will be upcoming in 2022 in the North York Tiff area. There are two projects in particular. The North York sidewalk improvements, although expected to be constructed in 2024, we'll start to see Phase I engineering completed early next year, and Phase II engineering will be underway, and it's expected that that will take approximately a year and a half to complete that engineering for that project. The North York roadway improvements are expected to be built in 2023, but again, engineering for that project will begin next year. With respect to stormwater, in 2021, the city completed the College View Stormwater Improvement Project in cooperation with School District 205 in front of York High School. This was at a cost of approximately $4.7 million. This project added approximately 8.7 acre feet of detention and provided flood protection to 17 homes. Also happening this year is the construction of the Third and Oak Stormwater Project, a much smaller one, but nonetheless important at $130,000. Looking ahead to 2022, there are three stormwater projects that are proposed in the budget for next year. One is the Southeast Elmhurst Stormwater Mitigation Project, which is being completed as part of the city's intergovernmental agreement with School District 205. I believe that's the last project that is a part of that agreement. That project is estimated to cost $630,000. We also have the Yorkfield Detention Basin Wall Repair Project and the Crestview and Brenthaven Stormwater Project, which is really involving floodproofing of homes in those areas. I think notable, and this is certainly a major topic for the city and just worth kind of updating it, since 2015, the city has completed 13 stormwater projects, reducing or eliminating flooding for 464 homes by creating 128 acre feet of storage, stormwater storage, across the city. And in the municipal utility area, some of the accomplishments in this area for this year include the start of the Utley Storm Station projects. That is a $3.17 million project. I sort of note that the dollars for that are in the general fund, but it's really, it's Paul and our utility side that's kind of leading that effort, so that's kind of why I mention it here. We've also began construction of the Bundle Four project at the water reclamation facility. That is a substantial project. The construction cost of that project is approximately $8.3 million, and that will be ongoing as we go into 2022. A couple of other just notable items on the utility side of Public Works. There was a project that involved this year a risk and resilience assessment, as well as a creation of emergency operating plans for our wastewater plant, our lift stations, and our stormwater stations. This was something that was kind of a successor project to the, after 2001, the risk assessment that all utilities had to undertake for their water systems to protect against potential, identifying, protect against potential threats to their systems. So this is kind of an update to this. This will also be something that has to be updated every five years going forward. We have been working very hard, and Paul and his group in particular have been working very hard on closing out the IEP consent order. The next report on that is due at the end of this year, and we are anticipating being able to close that out. So that has not happened yet, but it's hopefully very, very close in the future. A couple of other notable items from 2021. The city completed lining of a 60-inch storm line on Madison Street that was done as a result of an IEP requirement when the city replaced a water main on Madison back in 2018. Next year, in 2022, we anticipate completing annual water main replacement in the amount of about $2.25 million. The two areas that are being targeted for replacement right now are Route 83, just south of North Avenue, as well as Fellow's Court. And as I mentioned, construction of Bundle Four will be continuing at the wastewater treatment plant. We expect to complete the rehabilitation of the Utley Stormwater Pumping Station, as well as bid out the McKinley Stormwater Station Rehabilitation Project. And certainly, last but not least, on the utility side of Public Works, we are administering the contract for the design of the Water Reclamation Facility Bundle Five project, which is, at this point, anticipated in 2023. So we have an eye towards the future with that as well. That concludes my presentation. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'm not sure how we'll proceed on this, but I think we'll go through, well, the Public Works portion is significant, so I think maybe what we'll do is we'll go through in order on the agenda, starting with item B, and see if anyone has any questions, and we'll kind of proceed through the Public Works portion, which will probably go to just about, I guess, item O, perhaps? Whenever you-
Through item N.
N?
Yep.
Oh, you're not part of it, all right. All right, so let's switch over to page 128, 130, and open it up on that section for questions. Alderman Hill?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for that presentation, Director. I had a question about page 129, item 80-06, 80-06 vehicles, and I imagine that didn't trigger an increase because there was nothing budgeted for this year or the previous year. Is that, I'm imagining that's a replacement for two vehicles or two new vehicles in the fleet?
Correct. The difference in the budget is just a function of the fact of when that vehicle replacement falls. So if there was, if there was nothing in 2021, then there would have been no dollars budgeted there.
Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So this may go on as-
So this may go on a circle back, but I'm just trying to, to figure out the math. So I'm on page 128, 2001 through 2008. I almost had a heart attack at 2004, thinking it was just for this section, but I, I think 2004, if you could confirm, City Manager, is that representative of the whole department?
It's Administration cover engineering.
Yeah, so that's, this is Public Works Administration's and it does take into account the Engineering Division.
So, so all those items represent, or except for the, I guess I did see repeats of like the City IMF, Social Security, and Medicare, those all fall into the other departments? All other categories are an aggregate for all, all sub-departments?
Yeah, anything that's not in Water and Sewer or the Utility side and a spread of the Administration. Yes. I think we're saying the same thing.
We, we are saying the same thing. I feel much better because throughout, throughout the last several weeks, I do ratio calculations and this was not a good one. But, but now I get it. Thank you.
So you don't need a circle back?
I, I do not need a circle back.
All right, very good.
I'm happy with that.
Any other discussion on pages? Public Works Administration, Item B, 128, 130. Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up on that question about vehicles, I think this might be as good a chance as any to ask about that replacement. I know you had mentioned in your comments that replacements would be done with an eye towards possible alternate fuel options in the future. And I'm just wondering, you talked also about the propane conversions and the fees we had, and I tried to find those in the budget where those, the cost of those conversions were called out. But going forward, do we, and again, maybe this isn't the venue to do it, but do we make new capital purchases for vehicles with that in mind actively in terms of flex fuel or already set up for propane or perhaps electric vehicle purchases? Are we looking at that at any point in the near term or maybe at the, for next year's purchases?
Sure. I, I think, if I understand your question correctly, I mean, when, when we look at a vehicle purchase, we're looking at certainly the needs of whatever that vehicle is, the reason it's here, why we're purchasing and what it's intended to do. And then if there is an alternative fuel that we can use, if there is a greener way to provide that through how that vehicle is fueled, then that, that is a significant consideration in, in terms of what vehicle is selected and then the dollars that are reflected in, in the budget for that vehicle purchase. Does that answer your question?
I think so. Just to, so in, in light of that, I mean, I imagine those purchase choices are made as like fleet recommendations from, from elsewhere in terms of what general fleet, fleet replacements are, are they at our individual discretion, or how do we make those choices right now?
In terms of life cycle or in terms of how that-
And how those choices are made, I guess. What vehicles we purchased. I know you said, you know, it depends on the duties they'll, they'll be performing, but with these administrative vehicles, I'm just a little curious how that-
Some of it is on just availability of sort of what is out there. And a good example is that probably 10 years ago, Ford made the Escape Hybrid vehicle. And for a period of time, then it was discontinued and, and you, you could not purchase a hybrid Ford Escape, and now you can again. So that kind of vehicle, sort of that works well in our setting and that's, so it, that's a, I think, an example of one where it's, it's kind of a function of, we look at what that vehicle is used for, but also what is the market offering, what's available to us as far as a, a, a choice. And it really, depending on the kind of fuel that you intend on using, it can come and go over the years. Some fuels have kind of fallen in and out of favor with the marketplace. CNG is a good example of that, compressed natural gas. It was popular a long time ago for a while, then it was almost gone, and it's kind of come back in certain sectors. So it really, it, it's, it's a function of sort of, well, I guess what I've found is it's kind of not a one size fits all. It's, it's really kind of looking at the vehicle that we need to, to do a particular job and then what are the offerings by manufacturers that we have access to and, you know, sort of what, what, what makes the most sense.
Thank you.
All right. Other discussion on this item? All right, let's move on to Street Maintenance Pages 131, 134. Discussion there. All right. Item D, Snow Removal, Pages 135, 136. Alderman Dunn.
Yes, I was just wondering the relation between some of the areas of Public Works that are in the General Fund versus what's coming out of the Motor Fuel Tax Fund. So there's a snow removal element in Motor Fuel Tax Fund that, which is on 191. There's some overtime in that this year and a lot of, a lot of the salt purchase. And then if I look at this line item on page 135, the, kind of the overtime is now switching to this, the General Fund, and the salt is very, you know, small, $3,000. How do the, and there's also streets in Motor Fuel Tax Fund as well as electrical, and we have those also in the General Fund, Streets and Electrical. So how do those relate?
So I'll, I'll start to comment and then I'll let Stan fill in specifically, and I just confirmed with Ryan on page 191, I think you said, Alderman? Those expenses, if you recall, a couple of years ago, we had a discussion about the fund balance in the MFT and concerted effort to try to bring that down. And so the expenses on page 191 reflect our efforts to do that, to try to bring that balance down. And then there's a remaining expenses in the, what would it be, the snow removal and ice control on page 135?
Okay, I see. So only the salt really is traditionally out of the, the MFT Fund for snow removal.
Correct.
We just used that in 2021 to bring that balance down.
Yeah, we find it easier to comply with the MFT regulations in commodities versus personnel when possible.
I see. Okay. And that's the same for the electrical in the streets too? Because there's, those are in the MFT expenditures as well.
Are you on page 1, what is that? 189?
You on 192 or?
192 has electrical and, you know, we got, and 141, we have electrical also in the General Fund. Just wondering how those relate. What's the strategy there?
So that, that, that is a year-to-year expenditure that we have on electrical and on, on streets. But to, to bring down that fund balance, we did look at that commodity expense to, to just bring that to where the council wanted to see that.
All right.
Right. Other discussion on snow removal. Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm on 135, line item 1003. So who, who's doing this overtime work? Are these, I, I guess, are these people or are these, is this budget for people from another department to do overtime?
Yeah, I would sort of double, I guess, my, my understanding is that this is the snow overtime cost center for city staff that are performing snow removal.
So this could be somebody from, you know, WRF to, you know, getting in a truck and doing some shoveling and, okay. Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, so in our, our snow operations, it's all hands on deck throughout Public Works. Everybody recognizes that. It's, it's not just the street division that plows, they're mainly in charge of it, but it's all employees. And then we, we supplement also with other city employees. So people from Kent's Engineering Division will plow and we've even had people, we've had people in HR who plow overtime and, and what we can do is we pay a reduced rate to what their hourly is for their plowing and it's very cost efficient for us to do that.
Thank you.
We'll look for Emily in a snowplow this winter.
Valerie used to plow.
Oh, she did?
Yeah.
There you go. And if you guys, with your wage, you can get time and a half, so.
[laughing]
All right. Other snow removal items. Let's move on to Item E, Forestry, Pages 137, 140.
Yeah, this is a pretty simple question. If we looked back 10 years ago, what was our city tree count versus what our city tree count is today? I know, that was a real simple question, wasn't it? Okay, it's a circle back.
Let's wait and see.
Are you asking for total number of trees in the city or number that we planted 10 years ago?
Total number of trees that we have on the parkways in the city that belong to the city. They may be on our property, like City Hall has some. So we get a total, total overall picture of how many trees we have in the city that are owned by the city and what it was 10 years ago versus today.
Let's have the CMMS system add those in.
So you want 2011 to 2021?
Thank you. And I think that's going to be a circle back, it looks like.
Yeah, I believe so. Alderman.
You'll each go count in your ward tonight and report back to us next week. All right. Other forestry page items, questions, discussion.
Mayor.
Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. I'm on 137, line item 3077. And Director Belicki, I think you may have commented on this, but, so we've increased our annual, you know, run rate, if you will, in 2022 to, to start to make up for putting this program on hold this year, right? So at the end of 2023 is the general expectation that we'll, we'll be caught up?
It is correct, yes. Yep.
Other discussion. Alderman Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Director, as my understanding, of course, I wasn't here when it happened, but we've halted the tree planting before. Did we do a similar makeup in subsequent years with, okay, nodding, it looks like that's correct.
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Dwyer, and then Alderman Taluto.
Thank you, Mayor. Page 137, line 10-01. I know we're doing more planting. This seems like a significant bump up in wage, full-time wages. Is that reflecting additional planting? Is that a new employee that's being added? It just seems like a bigger incremental jump than previous years.
There's no, Brian, I thought that, we're giving you vacant positions there.
We had a retirement in early 2021 and then, early 2022, we had a vacation, we took it here. She was saying that.
Got it. A vacancy being filled and then stable otherwise. Okay, thank you.
Sorry, Alderman Taluto.
Thank you. Just in this forestry, before the pandemic, the City Council had approved, I think it was $50,000 and $50,000 for landscape improvements along First Street between Geneva and really all along First Street, all the way between the Fourth Ward and the First Ward. That was cut during COVID, but I see that we've got some other things that have been prioritized since then, like City Hall landscaping for $90,000, City Beds citywide for $20,000. My question would be, you know, that prior priority that the City Council had approved just kind of fell off the map. And I'd like to ask the staff to take a look at how we might be able to bring that back in, considering that we are getting, you know, funding and we've got other things that have come up in priorities.
So we're looking at KEB page 54, which did have that added back in in '23 and '24, 2023 and 2024 for each of them. If council would like to move that up, we can take that into consideration, but we, it had not, it did get cut and had not fallen off the radar completely, but we did plug it in for-
Would you, would you be willing to just take a look between, you know, the City Hall landscaping and, which is KEB 53, and this, and the KEB 54 and see? And I, and partly I ask that because I am aware also of some work being done on the DP and Z Committee with some real estate ideas and things like that, you know? Maybe we flip-flop those priorities and then wait and see how that pans out before we invest in landscaping here that might not remain.
Yes, we will look at that.
Thank you. I guess that should be a circle back then, just so we don't lose sight of that.
And are you tying that into a specific line or just generally?
It's forestry. I don't know what line item that KEB would fall into. I think it's landscaping, landscape maintenance, probably, so 3034 would be probably the line item.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, we'll take a look at where we had it in previous budgets and come back with that.
Very good. Alderman Dunn.
Yeah, I was just wondering with storm cleanup, we seem to have that a couple times a year. Does that fall under the overtime line? Is that usually how that is addressed? Or, you know, possibly some of it's contracted out?
We're, we're trying to locate that. I, I seem to recall it was in maybe like public benefits or some sort of miscellaneous type category. Obviously, that's something we budget for and hope that we don't have to use.
Right, okay.
So we're trying to locate that and we'll get back to that before we leave tonight. We'll-
No, there was a line item for the waste hauling contract, the administration for, let's see.
Yeah, that's, we build that into the rate a little bit just to, to have that revenue source in the event that we need it. We'll, we'll find it, though, before the end of the meeting tonight.
You have 37 minutes. All right. Okay, let's move from forestry to electrical, pages 141, 143. Alderman Mulliner.
Couple of winters ago, we realized that the traffic signals, when we switched them over to LEDs, froze up and they were very difficult to see. Has that been remedied? Have we come up with a remedy for that? And if so, what is it? Stan's looking at me with this blank stare like, because he wasn't here when it happened.
Well, I've noticed that we have replaced some of the lenses on ours with, like, a cone, which will help, so that the snow can't accumulate on that.
Okay, I'm just concerned because I didn't like seeing guys sitting there with brooms on the backs of trucks cleaning them off. Wasn't the best way to do it, but I know it had to be done somehow.
Yes, I remember that as well, Alderman. So let me talk with Stan and Corey and.
All right, thank you.
Let you know.
Other electrical. All right, we'll move on to rubbish disposal, page 144. Anything on rubbish disposal? All right, municipal buildings, pages 145, 146. All right, seeing.
You guys are chilling, huh?
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
All right, nothing on municipal buildings, central maintenance equipment, pages 147, 149. All right, we'll move on to public benefits, pages 150 and 151. All right, item K, motor fuel tax fund, pages 186, 192. Okay, item L, water fund, pages 254, 257. Okay, Alderman Tolu.
Patiently waiting.
Yes.
I'm bringing it up here because I don't know exactly where else to bring it up, because I think it's buried. So the topic is the Crest, Brunnhaven and Crestview floodproofing, which is in the capital expenditure budget for next year to be fully funded. But as we discovered when we were going through the stormwater prioritization project list, when we approved the Oak and Third project, it came to, to some of the aldermen's attention that the floodproofing pilot program has not started at all. So if I could, we could just get a little update, I mean, I guess, we're not, I don't know where the KEB funds are, because I don't see them on, on these particular pages, so they're probably buried in some line item somewhere. But, you know, if we don't even have the pilot program started, is it really realistic to believe that we're going to fully, potentially fully fund that next year? And if we could just talk through kind of what staff is thinking about that program, that would be helpful.
Sure, I'm going to turn that over to Director Bellicki.
I apologize stepping away from the table for.
Right when I had a question for you.
So this project, it did go before the, the, the pilot project went before the Public Works Committee in April of this year. And they did approve a report recommending that the city move forward with, with this pilot project. The project identified, it looks, I'm just looking at the, the committee report here in front of me, it looks like approximately 14 properties. A few of the issues that came up in conversation with the committee that I, I would say are still things that need more work before we can proceed with this. There was a thought that homes could potentially be retrofitted with floodproof doors, for example. The, the research that we were able to do and provide to the committee, we were finding doors that were very industrial in nature. They were looking, we were especially kind of looking for something that wouldn't require a homeowner to be at home to put it in place when there was an event that was occurring. And the, the products that we were finding were things that are more like a barrier that you would sort of have, you'd have to be there and you'd have to put something in place, sort of in front of your door, knowing that you might have a severe rain or flooding event that was going to happen. So that was just kind of one element of this, where it seemed like there was really more work to do in terms of what products might be available to, even to homeowners to choose from, to try to accomplish this. The other thing that I would say needs more work is just some consideration of some of the, the legal implications of how this would work in terms of, if it's a pilot project allowing a homeowner to, you know, is it set up sort of like a, a grant? Are they doing the work? I would imagine that there would be, there'd need to be some kind of an agreement to use those dollars and to determine how they would be used, that the city would want to have that in place. So there, there are some important steps that need to take place for this to really start. And those are just a couple of examples that I can share with you, at least that had been on my mind as, as far as things that need to be accomplished yet.
So still, so, I don't know, what's the timeline? Like, do you expect to have those things worked out so that the pilot program can start? I mean, is it seasonal? Does it matter? Does it need to, does the pilot program need to happen during like a summer season? Or?
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's necessarily dependent on the time of the year that it is, because we're really looking at either probably some kind of a flood resistant or floodproof door or window assembly that might go into a home and that, those kind of things can generally be done 12 months a year. So no, I, I don't think that's a factor. I, I would say we've got some more work to do, but I definitely think this is, it's doable in 2022. We, we have, I think, at least a few months of work ahead of us to get these things ironed out.
So, so just continuing to follow up, do you know what line items, the, the KEB, the full KEB amounts, do you know what line items in the budget they appear in? I guess my question is, is like, should we just reduce that operating budget if we know we're not going to spend that money this year? Is it 8014?
It is.
Yeah, because one of the KEB is 8014, but another KEB's a different number that doesn't appear anywhere under 305, so I don't know where it is. Because they have different numbers for Crestview and Brunnhaven. Unless that's, I'm just reading the numbers like wrong or something. So it's a, it's a typo in the KEB? Or did I just read the number on?
Are you on 257?
They're both the same.
Oh yeah, they are both 8014. Yeah, I read that wrong. Okay, so the, so the, those are in 8014 on page 257. So that's a total of like 120, 200, you know, $300,000. I mean, do you think that we'll get the results of the pilot program? Like, should that be halved, or?
I think we'll have the results of it. I think that one element of this, of both of these projects is this is really, this is really voluntary. So there's, there's two groups of homeowners here and there's nothing that requires the homeowners in either of these areas to participate. So we could develop this information, put it out to, to these areas, but whether or not someone will decide to pursue it is another story. So that's one thing we can't really, we cannot predict that.
Sorry, let me ask two more follow-up questions then. One, maybe, so when I think of a pilot program, I think of a program where if there's, you know, say there's 15 eligible homes, a pilot program would, would try it out with a couple of those homes, assess how it works, and then roll it out later to more. Is that how, or is the pilot program intended to like, do it for everybody and then see if we would roll this out to other areas in the city?
I think the pilot program was for this area, and if it worked there, we would look at other areas of the city.
This, the, I'm just going back to what the committee report said in terms, because it was specific to this pilot project. And it was identifying a small amount of funding to assist, in the words of the report, a select group of the 14 homeowners. So again, it would, had to identify somebody who was interested in pursuing it, but I think it was, it was really just to kind of set up a model that might work with potentially the rest of the homeowners in these two areas.
So Mayor, could I weigh in?
Yes, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you. So the director is right. I mean, the pilot was a subset of this area. And if, to work out the legalese, to work out, you know, what are the products that could, you know, potentially address the issues? Who are the vendors that deal with those products? Those, that's what the pilot was to define. And you're right, you know, a handful of, and I think we set aside 50K for the pilot, which would have addressed a couple of very specific situations, like a door, right? You know, for a house. And so after the pilot, we were going to assess, is this something that's viable for the other residents that have been identified in this, in these specific areas? This was never discussed or considered to be a broader program for the community. If, if it turns out to be something of benefit, that's something that we can certainly discuss. But this was very targeted towards these two areas.
Thank you. And I will promise this will be my last question then, is, so it's safe to say, I mean, to your comment, Director, that it's voluntary. So even if we reach out to some of these people and ask them to participate in the pilot, or if the pilot is successful within 2022 and we want to extend it, we won't, we won't, we won't spend those funds unless someone wants to participate in the program.
That's correct.
And so it could just roll up to our, our conservative budgeting and, and fall out in the end, anyway.
That's true.
Okay, thank you for that information on the program. I would, I, you know, I think I speak on behalf of all of the aldermen that represent those two areas, that it would be great to get that pilot going so we can understand, in 2022, so we can understand how that's, you know, going to work or not work.
Understood.
Thank you.
Let me ask a, because maybe I wasn't that clear. So are we doing the pilot in just one area and if it was successful, then we're expanding to the other? Or we're doing, the pilot could be anyone in these two areas at, at the outset?
These two, when it was presented to the Public Works Committee in April, were, were presented as a group together. So it could be, could be either of those areas or both.
Thank you, I was misadvised then. All right, do you have another question, Alderman Tolu? All right. Anyone else on stormwater fund? I think we're on M for municipal utility fund, pages 193, 217. All right, we'll go on to parking system fund, pages 218, 225. Yes, Alderman Brennan.
Thank you, just a general question. I know there was an agenda item in, in front of the Finance Committee talking about credit card fees and, you know, this just triggered, triggered that thought. I, I forget what direction and the timing we were taking with that, and I don't know if that's something.
I think we completed that when I was on the Finance Committee. Alderman Dunn?
Committee approved that and so did council. We are having an issue with our vendor, from what I understand, on trying to implement it the way we want, so it's been delayed. But it is in approval status, right? We're just trying to work through a technical issue.
That's correct.
Director Stinson was in a few meetings ago explaining that to us.
And is that something that I would see on 219? Or, no, okay.
No, those, the changes to the credit card fees were for bigger, larger dollar amounts, over $1,000. Yeah, that, that's where we were, we saw the most savings.
Thank you, sorry.
So on, on 219, the charges for services, these are, this includes in significant part the commuter parking, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And I think, did we allocate some of our? ARP money, thank you for supplementing that, but is there, is there any, I know we've had some discussions with Metro on other issues, but are they making any projections for when they see commuter rail increasing in view of the COVID-19 pandemic?
Well, as you can see by the revenue lines, we are taking a most conservative approach to that. I don't want to say it's anybody's guess. Metro is putting forth some predictions, I think they might be a little optimistic. The good news is, is we see that increase, we should see it significantly increase in Elmhurst on the UP West line, because we do have high ridership. So comparatively, we will, we'll most likely see that increase before others, but I, we're, we're being conservative on that, and that's why we're.
being conservative on that, and that's why we're using some of those grant dollars, those federal dollars, for maintenance of the parking decks, because that doesn't end, even though parking revenue's down.
Exactly. All right. Other discussion on the Parking System Fund. Alderman Palomski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am looking at the rentals off-street parking. Is that Metro or what else? Where is there? I can't.
What, are you on page?
Sorry, page 225.
225. Yes, those are the agreements that we have with the UP.
Okay, thank you.
Other Parking System Fund questions? All right. Now, does that complete our guest?
Capital Improvement Fund would complete, but that's just really a transfer of funds.
All right. Any questions on capital improvement? Does the director have a question?
He doesn't have a question. He has an answer to Alderman Dunn's question about storm cleanup. Thanks to Assistant Director Corey Taberry.
Sure. All right. So going back to page 137 in Forestry. I think, so you can see in 2020, in 10-03 overtime for full time, in 2020, that was 13,216, which was almost double the previous year. That is where the forestry overtime went. In 3078 is where all the tree waste disposal charges went. The $45,000 is really kind of a placeholder in case we do have storms of a similar magnitude. And the contractual help was accounted for in 30-88 in Forestry. And then on page?
So can I ask that, on 3088? So that is not fully storm cleanup, it's other trimming of parkway trees also.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification. Okay, all right. Thanks for the clarification.
All right. Any other questions generally on Public Works? Alderman Tullow?
Sorry, just back to 168 on the Capital Improvement Fund. I guess I'm just surprised, I don't know if we, you know, if this is an assumption that we're getting from IML, but on the intergovernmental revenue, 01-00, state income tax. You know, it's, our, you know, even this year, we're projected, we're estimated to be almost $1 million higher than before the pandemic. Are there, and then, you know, the out, you know, 2022 and 2023 are expected to continue on that higher trend than before the pandemic. I guess I'm just a little bit surprised, like, do we have some talking points from, whoever's providing these estimates to us about why?
You're right that there is, we do look at the IML numbers, but I think the more pertinent numbers here show in that the estimated, which is, which is based on actual year-to-date through September, October. So we do show projected 2022, you know, trying to be a little conservative, a little bit of a decrease from what we're estimated from this year. But they are, the numbers are higher than they were in 2019 and 2020. But we're basing it more on what we're seeing currently this year.
But we don't really know why. I mean, are people making more money? Like, I don't think that, or, I mean, are we just collecting more? I mean, it's not any kind of an LGDF or anything like that, right? Like, a change?
There haven't been any legislative changes, no, that impacted it.
The governor commented upon how that was a bright spot in the state's budget, that income tax was up significantly, but.
Yeah, okay.
Also, there was an increased state fee from the LGDF that was back in, I believe, the 2019, 2020 timeframe that was phased down. It was, I believe, like 10% that went down to 5%. So that may be attributing somewhat to the numbers looking more depressed in the 1920 timeframe. But the projected numbers, there's no additional legislative adjustments.
Any other questions at all on Public Works before we release the director? Well, thank you for a good ear, Stan. I see Director Stenson back there. Are we going to move on?
Maybe we can get one more in, start with IT, and then continue, most likely the other, from the Q, excuse me, from P, down to next Monday.
All right, so who's doing, whoever you want on?
Would be Assistant Manager COP.
Assistant City Manager COP, all right. Information Technology, pages 112 to 115, item P.
All righty. Our IT department continues to manage the city's computers, data voice, cell phone, software technology, and provides maintenance and repair services to all city departments and employees. In 2021, the processed over 31 requests for service, filtered over 10 million email viruses, spam and malware attachments, and recycled 2,000 pounds of electronic waste. Also in 2021, completed the police MDT replacement and Groupwise to Exchange Migration, which hopefully will be turned on here in the next couple of weeks. We did do a practice on Thursday. We were closed for training here at City Hall, and so we allowed all the employees to work on the Outlook Exchange, to get used to it. There's some more trainings to come up. By doing that, we found a couple things we have to tweak, but we're hoping within, definitely by the end of the year, to have everybody on the Outlook Exchange off of Groupwise. We're also looking at ways to, when it's appropriate, to virtualize our servers into the Microsoft Azure or Amazon government accounts. We're continuing to upgrade our wide-area network by completing some Comcast fiber. AT&amp;T is no longer providing the T1 lines, so we had to put fiber in place of that, so there are a couple spaces, one of the fire stations and the Public Works Garage, where we're finishing up that project now. We're also working with the SCADA system. I know Public Works and Building Committee are working on it regularly. Anytime we're upgrading any of our utility areas, we're adding fiber to it, fiber connections. And we're looking at how those fiber connections are happening. So when our Comcast contract comes up in five years, we're hoping to be able to tap off of those fiber to put city buildings on that same fiber network. So we're all on our own fiber network at that time to reduce the cost from our Comcast. Like, for one example, we have one that runs up north that runs just a block off from the fire station. So we're hoping to be able to tap into that, into the fire station, when time comes appropriate for that. Line item 8031, and this here is where the, even though it's a communication managers' type thing, where it's the funds for the website upgrade. So the city's communication manager is working on a plan that would incorporate a communication-focused group to help assist us in the project. Currently, we have four different websites. We have the Explorer Elmhurst, we have the Elmhurst History Museum, elmhurst.org, and the elmhurststormwaterplan.org. So we're hoping to get those, look at a way to more work together, to collaborate with them all, and make it easier for the resident to be able to access those websites and have a better experience when they're on them. We also, on 8031, is the budget for the city's new ERP, which is going through the Finance Committee as we speak. That's budgeted 21 through 23. We're hoping to get the first, get the approval this year, make our first payment for the new ERP. It's an 18 to 24-month project, and so it's budgeted to be paid throughout those three years. And that's also was ARPA money was used to help fund that project. Line item 1523 is slightly, also slightly increased, because our annual software maintenance costs will go up slightly with the new ERP. 3052 also shows an increase for payment for our GIS consortium. In 2021, our long-term GIS specialists retired, and rather than hiring a specific person for a GIS, we joined the consortium with, I think it's 32 other communities that are involved in that, and so far, it's worked out very well, the depth of their bench, and we should be seeing some things come up here now, where not only Elmhurst employees be able to use GIS to a better extent, but also allow the residents of Elmhurst to access some of the GIS data that we have also. Line item 8098, there's funds in there to upgrade our VoIP phone system, which is about six years old now. And then there's $100,000 for installation and upgrade of security cameras in city buildings, which I know is a referral that's out there right now. And then I know this discussion came up a couple times already about how the data processing is distributed to the different departments, and there was discussion about 2021 and 2022 being up to that level, and the main reason that that's increased was because of the ERP. What we did for that line item is, it went, it was only supposed to be like $115,000 for 2021, but the ARPA funds, we increased that to about $770,000. So then I've got distributed throughout the rest of the departments. And it's divided based on the number of PCs in that department. So that's, that's what we use, the percentual PCs, pay the percentual processing fees. And I'd be glad to answer any questions regarding IT.
Well, I will say, for my own personal feeling and speaking with a number of aldermen, I think the, it's, our website is in significant need of improvement. I get, I myself and some aldermen have talked about how we can't find anything, and if we can't find it, the public can't find it. And we've emphasized communications is a priority, I believe, so I'm glad to hear that. And I'm also glad, I keep hearing about this Outlook coming around, which I think will be, help us with our Freedom of Information Act request. If we get all of the city council people to go on that, then instead of you having to search your emails for FOIA requests, the city can probably do it for us. It's a lot easier to search on Outlook than some of these other programs. Those are my comments. Alderman Brennan?
Thank you, Mayor. So the ERP system on page 113, 8031, are professional services included in those numbers?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's about half and half, actually, is what their cost is for the software, and then the other half, a little bit more than half, I guess, is implementation, is professional services.
So that's the reason 2023 goes down?
Correct.
That's this annual subscription for the software?
No, that's actually, that's not. The actual annual subscription is under 5023 software maintenance. It just goes down because it's, the total fee is about $1.5 million, and what we did, we just separated it over those three years, because we figured we'd get the first payment in this year, and then it's going to take 18 to 24 months to get implemented, so we'll make the next payment next year, and it'll make a final payment, the final, which would be the smallest payment at that point. And there's other things in that line item too, like, for instance, that in 2022, $998 is not just all ERP, the website, $150,000 for the websites in that same line item.
I see. Okay.
Alderman Tullow?
Just a follow-up to Alderman Brennan, because I know he's in the software business. The committee did talk with staff about if there was an ability to buy the software and implement with a different provider. I know Workday, you know, has those types of arrangements. This particular software package does not seem to have that. They don't have a partner network like that, so we are kind of, basically kind of required to utilize Tyler Technologies' implementation services in-house, and it is over half of the cost. So we did ask that question. It's one of those situations where we're just kind of stuck with them.
Yeah, and just for what it's worth, I mean, looking at the numbers, they don't seem outlandish for what we should be getting from them, so.
Good.
All right, other IT questions? All right, I think we're going to stretch it and go one more. We know we want to do Human Resources, 110, 111, and then we'll call a wrap. Who said no?
I'm not opening my book again.
Here, Alderman Tullow.
She's feisty today.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
The HR department continues to support the city by developing and managing employee resources, including staffing and recruitment, managing employees, labor relations. The HR staff, department, staff liaison to the Board of Police and Fire Commission, and which facilitates hiring police and fire officers. Some of the highlights for 2021 is renegotiated International Union of Operating Engineers, local 150 contract, beginning the Fraternal or Police, which expires in December 31st, 2021, and initiated two new eligibility lists, both for police and firefighters, and again, assisted with the ERP vendor selection. 2022, account 3047, physical exams, that's up, that's the pre-employment testing and for non-sworn positions. It also includes some firefighter physicals and CDL drug testing program. 3052, professional services, there's a significant increase in that, and that is based on really two things. One is the compensation study. The last time was done in 2019. The original was done in 2013, and one thing we said we were going to do is every three years, go out to market. In the intermediate years, we do our own analysis to see where we are. But 2022, we're due to go ahead out to the market again and see how we stand, and make sure we're still meeting our goals for benefits. And there's also the fire lieutenant and battalion chief promotional process. That's the one process that's done through collective bargaining, is, was taken out of Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, was state law allowed them to do that, and they negotiated to take that out of there. And then 3092, contract staffing, changed from a part-time employee to a part-time contractor. But there was one other thing, in 1002, wages part-time. There was an oversight when the budget got put together. There should have been $45,000 in the part-time wages. There was a part-time HR journalist prior, it actually, just as COVID started, she retired, and the position stayed vacant. And so we were going to refill that position. And so 70% of that pay comes out of this line item, and then like 30% comes out of the MUF. And so even though it shows projected 2022 and 1002 is zero, it should be like $45,000. So when the final budget comes across, you will see that change on the final budget.
For 1002, 20, year 2022 should be $45,000.
Correct. There'll be a corresponding, probably like $15,000 in the MUF, split between water and sewer. That's how that position's been historically distributed.
Okay. Questions on Alderman Palomski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we completed, or when we were discussing the Larch property pertaining to group home, there were some questions about how we should proceed in the future if we have, you know, similar questions. And I understand that was a zoning situation, but I think we, we learned in some of the discussion that there is a need for a policy update in addressing this. And the reason why I bring it up underneath HR is because our HR director is also the ADA coordinator for the city, and that's beyond HR, and I didn't see it anywhere else. Has there been any thought given to professional services to develop a policy to be able to better handle requests for group homes, or something similar where it is to accommodate a disability?
I think at this point, we were looking at it through the zoning ordinance specifically to determine what that process would be, and how that would be evaluated, and based on that, make appropriate additions or to our, to our staffing. Because I don't know what, we don't even, we're not even 100% sure what that process will be at this point.
That's what I'm saying. So for somebody, oh, I'm sorry. Instead of, but not in zoning, but more to kind of remove it from. but more to, to kind of remove it from the zoning process. Like, there were some questions, and I think our speaker said, yeah, you know, there, this would be fitting for, for it to be a policy outside of zoning. So I just didn't know if it was...
I thought, okay.
Well, I think between HR and zoning, we can accomplish that.
Okay.
We can find consulting dollars in here. I think that's the...
Okay, yes. Yep, thank you.
Yeah, there's, that was part of the plan for the, with the zoning, was to determine what that policy, that that practice should be, or policy should be.
Okay, thank you.
Any other HR questions? Alderman Dunn?
Yeah, just wondering about the professional services on 30, line 3052. The lieutenant battalion chief promotional process?
Correct.
I don't, I don't know if you, I missed you mentioning it, but what is that, $45,000?
That's, I mean, that's all the, that's the cost to run that process. I mean, there's a, there's a, a written test that gets given. There's also an, there's a evaluation, I want to see what you call it, scenarios that are, what is that called? I can't think of the name off the top of my head right now. But we hire a professional, a professional service, they'll come in and run, they, they do is, they do an evaluation, they'll do, they'll do like role-playing, they'll set up certain scenarios, and they, and they'll test the candidates on those, on those different scenarios. And it's, and it's an expensive process between the written examination and the evaluation process.
It sounds like it's more money than to hire the, hire the chief, the fire chief.
For the, it is. Honestly, well, there's a, I mean, there's, so there's a, there's an eligibility, I mean, every, every firefighter can be as eligible for lieutenant's examination, and every lieutenant's available is, is able to take the battalion chief test. So you could have 40 people testing, and that's at $45,000, that's, you know, less than $1,000 per person. But it's, it's a negotiated process, spelled out in the collective bargaining agreement, how it should be ran, and that's the cost of doing it.
Okay.
State statute, which our collective bargaining is...
Thank you. Like Alderman Dunn, I'm sort of shocked at that number, but, so, so same area, if, it calls out two projects totaling $65,000, but the line item on page 110, 3052 is 160. What is the, what is the balance?
There's a, there's a standing number of citywide training of $45,000. There's the FMLA outsourcing of $7, $7,500. Strategic Plan is in there, our EAP program, and it's about $15,000.
Are you reading that off someplace? Am I missing something?
Yeah, I'm reading off my notes.
Oh, okay, okay. Oh, I thought I missed something.
So on the J form was just what the increase was. There's other stuff, a lot of it's a standing, it's a standing repeated cost. The strategic planning is on there, there's money strategic planning, performance management, there's performance management training on there. A lot of our training comes out of there. Our city handbook review, which we do on an annual basis, there's $2,500 in there for, for that review. The Police Department, police polygraphs are, are in that line item. Comp study, Lieutenant Provost.
Okay. I, I, I thought there was an oversight, but that makes sense. Thank you.
All right. Anything else on HR? You don't have to open your book. All right. Sorry, we went five minutes over, but we're in good shape in terms of our budget review, so we'll pick it up on the next one without belaboring anything. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Alderman Brennan with the motion. Alderman Hill with the second. I guess we have to do a roll call vote on this.
Nudra?
Aye.
Park?
Aye.
Conquest?
Aye.
Vito?
Still there.
Absent. Mulliner?
Aye.
Brennan?
Aye.
Remus?
Aye.
Deuter?
Aye.
Dunn?
Aye.
Hill?
Aye.
Palomsky?
Aye.
Stenson?
Aye.
Tulludo?
Aye.
Hayhill absent. 12 ayes, 01as, 2 absent.
12 ayes, 01as, 2 absent. We are adjourned. Thank you.